Okay, the clock shows six o'clock PM. If everyone would take their places, please. Thank you for coming. And we ask that you turn your cell phones off, please. And we welcome Commissioner Reeves here and Mr. Bruce McKenzie here. Another guest that we have. Walt, you're not a guest because you come here too often. We'll take care of the rest of them later. We will begin the meeting, this is Tuesday, April the 10th, at 6:00 PM. Regular meeting will begin with the invocation offered by George Berudi, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Eric Maloney. You may stand if you wish.
Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day in this community that we're honored and blessed to live in. Continue to watch us as we guide us, as we try and do the work of the people in everything we do. Please make sure that we're honoring you in all we say and do. Just keep us, as always, keep us in check with our opinions and whatnot. And just make sure that we're, as I said, honoring you in everything we do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us started. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Stuart, come here.
Thank you, thank you. And welcome to everybody on this first meeting in April. Is this a beautiful day today?
It is.
Nice after that very cold Saturday that we had.
Do we vote on that?
Okay. How many people went to the farmer's market? Had a great turnout the other night in our brand new location, the A.C. Schreiner Mansion. It was very nice. And I hope that those of you who didn't make it can make it this week because we'll be back every Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM through October. And you can see some of the products up here. We've got wine, we've got radishes. Does anybody know the difference between radishes and rutabaka? They look a lot alike, I think.
These do.
We have apple butter.
Sorry.
Those pops at the top, I didn't get one the other night, but I'm gonna get one this Friday because they looked really good. And of course, the pizza right there, that's the only complaint I have is that that pizza place was about 20 yards from Pint and Plow. So you gotta actually walk 20 yards to have pizza and beer. We'll see what we can do about that.
The hot sauce was good, too.
The hot sauce was good, too? Great, great. All right. Flag football champs, since the last time we talked, we had a flag football championship. The Pretty Boys won the city championship. They beat Texas Elite 58 to 45. This is, again, one of the great programs offered by our Parks and Recreation Department. I think we're moving into softball season now. Softball season. But look at that trophy they got, that's pretty nice. The team on the left, the upper right, the kid running, the kids in the lower right, those are all Ingram, Tybee, and O.L.H. former football players. So it's nice to see them back on the field. We got to say goodbye to Sandra a couple of weeks ago with a great barbecue. Great turnout, it was a terrific afternoon. This, as you can see, is a great, I mean, it was fun to take this photo, but this is a photographer's nightmare if you'll look closely. We got up in the, what do they call the bucket that takes you up really high? Yeah, something from somebody who doesn't like heights. So you really only get like one shot at it. So you tell everybody to look up at me. If you'll look on the back row, Alex and Donovan back there at the very back are talking to each other and not looking at the camera like a bunch of first graders. They're probably discussing what's the difference between a radish and a rutabaka or something like that. Okay, we had our last, not our last, our sixth steering committee meeting yesterday at Peterson Regional Memorial Hospital. We sure want to thank them for hosting us and Lisa Winters. It was a great job and a very nice room they put us up in. Discussing the land use plan and thoroughfare plan. And we're gonna be talking about it again Thursday and Friday, April 19th and 20th from 3:00 to 5:00. Now, I have City Hall up here, but that's tentative because we don't think it's gonna be big enough to hold the crowds that we're expecting, so.
I think we decided to go ahead and have it here.
We are gonna have it here? Okay, then scratch the tentative from that. It's gonna be here. And we sure hope that all of y'all will come out and see the latest on it and give us your input. We are moving along really fairly well. And the last thing I want to say, just a personal observation of the sports complex. I went to Schlotzsky's on Sunday for lunch. Couldn't find a place to sit down because it was filled with nine, 10, 11-year-old baseball players. And somewhere, didn't mind not sitting down, somewhere in there, somebody blew me up at the same time. And they went over to the sports complex. So it was nice to see, that's exactly what we want to see. These kids are in there and their parents are in there and their coaches are in there in our local establishments, dropping cash on food. So feel really good about that. All right, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stuart. Any other announcements from council or any from the audience? If not, we'll move to item number two, which is the Visitors and Citizens Forum. And any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form, give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take any action on the item, but may place the item on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10 and each speaker is limited to four minutes. And I have one showing that wished to speak, David Lipscomb.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. David Lipscomb, 909 Lake. I'd like to bring up a topic that came up at the last council meeting. And that's applauding the city staff, in particular Public Works, about putting some incentives out there for water conservation. We're entering the growing season and to conserve water, I think, is very important since we haven't had much rain. So just a quick reminder from myself, when we water outdoors, it only takes about an inch of water a week to water, to properly water your yard. So water conservation with aides from the Water Department and don't overwater in your yard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any others showing to speak. Did anyone else wish to speak? If not, we will move to item 3A, which is proclamation proclaiming April the 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Kerrville Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Now, that's a word to mess up, isn't it? Wendy Risher, would you join me at the front, please?
Read together without glasses, how do you like that, Wendy? Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and the accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Kerrville Police and Fire Communications Center. And whereas, telecommunications are the first and the most critical contact that our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, telecommunications of the City of Kerrville have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, telecommunications exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April the 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Kerrville Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And before we give a round of applause, I just want to say that I have been through the facility. And it's when I went through the Citizen Police Academy training, they took us through and we observed how they operated in there. It is a very demanding job. It is a tedious job. You have to concentrate. And I know it's not easy to train and stay with it, but we sure appreciate. What is your title, Wendy, there?
She's one of a very able telecommunications.
Oh, she is.
Very good.
I have a master certification.
A master certification. So with that, would you please give a round of applause for the job they do?
Mayor, can I add?
Sure.
You know, we always refer to police officers and firefighters as our first responders, and that truly is the case. But the telecommunications in themselves are really considered to be first responders. They're our first voice to the community. When somebody calls in for assistance, they're the ones to get, that get assets rolling in the direction they need to be rolling. They are the ones that provide for the public safety. And they're also the lifeline for police officers and firefighters in the field. So without their support in the job that they do day in and day out, our task as first responders from the police and fireside would be almost impossible to take care of.
Sure.
They do an outstanding job for us.
Yes, they do. Thank you, thank you, Chief. Okay, item number four is the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove any? If not, I will accept a motion on items 4A, 4B, and 4C.
I move that we pass those three items.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Yes. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion carries five to zero. And thank you for those who came, just in case. A is ordinance, second and final reading. Ordinance number 2018-10, amending Chapter 102 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 4, Operation of Vehicles, Division 1, Generally, by adding a new section, 102-118, to regulate the use of handheld portable electronic devices while operating a vehicle, providing exemptions, providing affirmative defenses, providing an increasing penalty for subsequent offenses, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. Chief?
Mayor and Council, this is the second and final reading for this ordinance, establishing regulations for the use of portable electronic devices while operating a vehicle within the city limits. You heard a presentation in February of this year regarding the meeting on the development of an ordinance regulating the use of portable electronic devices. The consensus of the council was to support the development of an ordinance containing regulations that are more restrictive than those currently contained in state law under Section 545, 421, 51 of the Texas Transportation Code. And the proposed ordinance provides for a complete ban on the use of portable electronic devices while operating a motor vehicle unless the device is used in conjunction with a hands-free device. In essence, a hands-free ordinance.
Kind of no changes since the first reading?
No changes.
Councilman Volkle was not here during that time. Did you have any questions in particular about this ordinance?
Sure, on, what is it? 102-118, number five, engage in any other use of the device while operating a vehicle to include holding the handheld portable electronic device. I personally don't like that language. Can you maybe change that to actually using or engaging in the use of the handheld rather than just holding it?
We could make the change, but I don't know how the officer would be able to differentiate between holding device and utilizing device.
That's a good question.
So in other words, just to make it clear, I guess you're referring to what's on page three? Is that on page three?
Yes, page three at the bottom.
To include, I see that language there. It also has it on page two.
I just don't want to give someone a ticket for holding their phone or iPad or whatever.
Right.
And that could be a $500 ticket. That's another question I have, is the pricing. I think that's a little high. I think it maybe should be across the line, just one fee across rather than starting off at 100 and ending at 500 minimum.
Why don't we say, could we say while, Mr. Hayes? Engage in any other use while operating a vehicle while holding the handheld portable electronic device? Would that clear that up? So that you're not just holding it in your hand?
No, you mean using the device while holding it.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that essentially just means removing the to include holding the handheld portable. If it says engage in any other use of the device, isn't that enough? Because if, I think what he's talking about, I could be wrong, is if we're gonna make it illegal to just hold the phone, I understand what you're talking about with enforcement, but if we make it illegal to hold the phone, we're really just saying no one-handed driving. But if I hold, if I pick up a cup, I'm not gonna get a ticket. If I pick up a phone, even if I don't use it, I'm gonna get a ticket. That's, is there a way to get the enforcement that you need and as well as not doing that?
Well, a key component to this entire ordinance is the use of hands-free as a component of use of an electronic device, either through Bluetooth or by mounting it to the vehicle on a temporary stand, but getting it out of your hands. If we change the ordinance to allow for the holding of the device, then in effect, you're creating an affirmative defense in a way.
Tell me this, on the state law, you had mentioned in that presentation that you're not allowed, the police officer's not allowed to look at the phone to see something.
That's correct.
Or is that still the case, no matter what we write in here, that you're not allowed to ask to see the phone to determine if they were using it?
I would follow the state law in regards to that, yes.
So we can't override that in whatever we have here, correct? Okay.
So what happens today, if you were to pull someone over because you think they're texting, do you write them a ticket and they argue that in court, or?
Yes. You always have the right to go to court.
So you can write them a ticket under your understanding that they were texting with the law, state law as it is today?
If they were texting, yes. Not if they were speaking on the phone or playing some type of game on the phone or utilizing another reading device while driving. But if they were specifically texting, yes.
Well, I've talked to a lot of people in the community and the majority of the people I've talked to are not in favor of us doing this and actually have requested them to be able to vote on it. I think that might have been brought up last meeting.
I want to talk.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me see. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I've experienced just the opposite. And I think most people understand that this saves, if we have this ordinance in place, it will save lives. And that's the primary motivation for it, as far as I'm concerned. The state law's going far away and we need to be as proactive as we can to keep people from having tragic accidents. You'll remember there was one of these just a few miles south of here, what, a year ago, a year and a half ago? When a young man in a car texting killed, what, six people, as I recall? Three people, six people? Hit a bus.
It was more than that.
Okay, well, I don't know what, I don't remember the exact number, but it's happened right close by and it will happen in town one of these days. And I don't want to see that happen.
And that is currently illegal, I think we discussed last time. That's under the state law, currently an offense.
Correct.
So we're not adding to that. That's currently a violation of state law. Would you explain to me on page four, affirmative defenses, number two, to navigate a global positioning system or navigation system? How that works?
Those GPS devices are affixed to the vehicle and you can utilize that positioning system, that GPS system, for navigation purposes. You can utilize that.
But not while holding your?
No. But if you have your phone in the seat beside you and it's on speaker so that Siri is saying, "In 400 yards, turn right", that's okay, as long as you're not holding it.
So that still applies as long as you're not holding it? You can use, because you said it's an affirmative defense.
As long as your hands are on the wheel, you're just listening.
Okay, but I think to what Mr. Summerlin was talking about, if it's sitting on the seat and I push a button on it, I'm ticketed, correct?
No, you're not.
It's not in your hands.
But it's not affixed to the vehicle either?
It doesn't need to be. It just needs to be operated in hand, in hands-free mode. You can operate it in hands-free mode, it just doesn't need to be in your hands.
Okay. That's a little different than what he told us last time. Okay. At the fee thing, we briefly discussed it last time. Is there a particular reason to not treat this like, the pricing of it, not treat it like other tickets and have a fee instead of a range?
The range of offense fines is almost in line with what it is in the state law in terms of the elevation of fines for offenses.
Okay, see, I don't have a problem with that. I'm talking about the part where it says from 100 to 5, you know, on first offense, it's a range. What's the reasoning for that?
If there's some type of extenuating circumstance involved in the use of a handheld device, that gives the option for the municipal court judge to increase that fine, as an example. If you had a traffic accident that was involved in this particular offense and you linked that use of the handheld device to the cause of that traffic accident, then that would be a little bit more severe than an officer seeing somebody utilizing a handheld device and writing a citation for it. So that gives the municipal court judge the latitude to increase that fine as would be deemed necessary by him.
But by the same token, if I was speeding and caused an accident, I'd still just get one fine, they don't have a range for it, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I would prefer to see that we set a fee. Escalate it, first offense, second offense, third offense, or third or more. But I would rather set a fee. And I don't know what it needs to be, but I would prefer to not have a range for it.
I agree.
You could go with what's in there already for the set fees for A, B, and C.
The minimums of it?
Yes.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I just would like to see it be a number. The other thing is more, it's not an amendment, it's a question. So it's not a moving offense, moving violation or whatever. And forgive me, I don't understand about how this works, but if, if you get a ticket for, what's the, you still get warrants and stuff like that if the person doesn't pay?
Failed to appear.
That, okay, so it's, it's like everything else, it's just not a moving violation. That's all that's really, okay, all right.
Would you like to make a motion then, Mr. Berudi?
I have one more question. As far as, this is all gonna be in the city limits. Is that gonna include IH10? Are we gonna be monitoring IH10 if people are using it, passing through Kerrville?
Well, it's within the city limits. So if there's a section of IH10 that is within the city limits, then yes, we would be utilizing that same, the same set of standards for enforcement. But it doesn't mean that I'll have officers sitting up on IH10 waiting to write citations for this. We don't do that now with other violations. We do patrol IH10, but our main focus is within the corporate and municipal city limits and not necessarily out on IH10.
And there'll be signage on IH10, I guess? Or are they just gonna be on, like the gateways into the city?
Well, depending on where the signage is placed, which should be at all of the gateways to the city. And if IH10 is incorporated within that, then we would put signage up there.
I will point to Section 9. It says, "Beginning on the effective date of this ordinance and continuing for 90 days, the city's police department may only issue warnings for violations of the ordinance. During this period, the city manager or designee will engage in an educational effort to inform the public about this ordinance and the importance of not driving distracted." Do we know how long it would take to get signage?
Pretty quick, because we can do a lot of that ourselves, except on the interstate where the state has certain requirements. So we'd have to work with them on that.
Within that 90 days, that would be my concern, to make sure there's public awareness. Any other questions?
Did we decide that we can? Did we decide we can't do a referendum on this, or is that?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Did you talk about having a referendum on this? Is that, is this something we can do for this?
Right, so Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but the council has the option, just as the council, to call for an election on this issue and, you know, put it on the ballot. And if you wanted to do that, my recommendation would be probably May of '19. Because if you go, it's too late for May of this year. And then if you go in November, you have an added cost of another election. And we're already talking about a potential bond election in May of '19 as well. And perhaps even a charter election. So that would be when you would want to do that.
I was gonna make a motion, but the button's not available, so somebody must have.
I thought we were done a while ago and was gonna move the approval, but I can withdraw it so George can make his amendment.
So do I just hit refresh to get a button?
Maybe. I pushed withdraw.
Yeah. I don't have a way of motioning. Do I?
Just make, and we'll have, see if there's a second.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we pass.
I pressed the button.
Oh, you pressed the button?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, then.
Yeah. I make a motion, we approve it.
Is there a motion? As stated, is there a second?
As stated.
Second? Is a motion in the second? Motion carries three to two.
I hit the wrong button, I'm sorry.
Let's make a motion again to approve as written.
I still move.
Okay.
We don't want to deal with the amendment?
Oh. Excuse me.
He's made the motion and you've made the second? We're just casting a revote?
No, I didn't second it this time.
Mayor, for the record, we need to make sure we understand what happened.
I voted no. I voted yes on accident and I hit, I tried to hit no and it went through.
So we're recasting the vote on the first motion?
Oh, I see.
Did you want to restate the same motion, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, I.
All right. And the same second, Ms. Summerlin?
Well, no, because I'd like to hear what the amendment is.
Okay, then motion would fail for lack of second? Is there another motion?
I guess I'll make a motion. And so the, I move that we pass this ordinance as written with one amendment. I guess it's Section 6 where it talks about the pricing. And I would say that A, first offense shall have a fine of $100. B, second offense shall have a fine of $200. And C, third and subsequent offenses shall have a fine of $500. That would be the amendment.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. And motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Chief. And everyone out there, I just want to say that I did the approval for this ordinance. It's gonna be some drastic adjustments for me and perhaps a lot of others in the room. I would just say get a healthy Bluetooth and be very careful out there. And we hope it'll save lives. Thank you so much. Item number 5B is ordinance number 2018-11, adopting the Design Manual for Installation of Network Nodes and Node Support Polls pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 284, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000, ordering publication, providing an effective date, providing other matters related to the subject. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a second reading for the Design Manual for the Network Nodes or Network Node Support Polls pursuant to Chapter 284 of the Local Government Code. If you'd please answer any questions.
All right, council, I see no questions.
I'd make a motion.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we pass it on, ordinance 2018-11 on second reading.
With a motion as second? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Drew. Item number 6A is to authorize the execution of a construction contract with Acne Vision Company, Inc., for the Singing Wind Drive Reconstruction Project in the amount of $791,734.40 and to review the current street maintenance program. Mr. Barron, will you be doing all this for us?
I'll be reviewing the street maintenance program and Kyle will follow up. We can take them in either order that you like there.
Well, since you're there, go ahead and tell us what's happening.
The good news is I won't be going over all the streets to put these at Chelsea Placehold.
Let's get a round of applause on that. There we go.
Twenty-eight pages, we'll save you from that. We'll do a five-page PowerPoint instead. Hopefully get it on a shorter order. I want to give a little update of what we've been working on since, for this year and confirm that we have started our actual street maintenance. Most people consider when we actually out there repaving our, the beginning of our paving season. But we do things all winter long. Let's go over and talk about a few of those things. We started our actual street maintenance in, we're repaving effort March of this year. So we're in way, we're underway. And since January, though, we've been working on a couple of different items here. You'll see the lane. you'll see the lane, we did the traffic study that, that we brought to council early on. Our street department has implemented a lot of those strategies that we have, that were identified in there. We're still working on a few, contacted some people today to, to continue that process and moving it forward. We've done the lane reconfiguration and striping on Shriners Street in Clay. The traffic light adjustment on Shriners Street, we shortened the, the time that the streets coming, haze has to wait for Shriners in the evenings, and so it goes to a blinking light now instead of that, so help those people get out, get out on Shriners quicker. The River Hill Roundabouts, we've located contractors, help us report the concrete after it's been removed, and we've got, we've now acknowledged the lowest bid, so we'll be moving forward with that. Clay and Shriners Roundabout Strategies, we've contacted some of the property owners there, and we're starting to, to meet with them, haven't made a lot of headway yet, but there is progress there. And we're implementing the four-way stop at Dree Street.
Is it generally favorable for the roundabouts so far?
At Clay. We're, we're going to meet with them tomorrow. So Mark and Linda will be in tomorrow, hopefully, and we'll be able to, to get a, get a, get a feel for where they're at on that. Hopefully so. Some other, the, the normal repairs that we do are potholes and tree trimming. Something that, that also hasn't been, may not be well-known is that our street department does a lot of preparatory work for the slurry seal and crack seal, we go out and clean the streets and fix potholes and do point repairs, trim trees, and so we do all of those streets, you'll see in that attachment, all those streets. Our guys have already been there probably twice by the time the contractor gets there, so we're seeing all that, that mileage as well in our street department. Other things, so we talked about in, as March started our official paving season, that's what we consider our mill and overlay work, and you'll see here on the, we're on Blank Street, we hope to complete the first mill and overlay by the middle of the month. And we anticipate being able to finish all of our mill and overlay streets, as, as you'll see on your, on your, the street list there. The full-depth restriction is a little bit different, we have started it, we've started with Bow Lane and Pinto Trail, we're, we're working that, hopefully get it done by the end of the month. But this is the one category that we're falling behind on, we're not being able to keep up with what our plan has, and you'll, you'll be able to see that as well in, in the, in the document there. We just don't have the amount of crews it would take to get it all done. The question always comes up, well, why, why don't we think, why can't we get there? Well, when that study was developed, we were really new at paving streets, and we didn't know how much we could get done, and we're trying to work it into a budget. And now we know more, now we know that we can get X amount of done. We know how much, how long it takes to do the prep work for the crack seal, how long it takes to do the prep work for the slurry seal, all of that work is getting done. This is the, the most expensive, the most labor-intensive, so it suffers the most. So our fix for that is to hire contractors to come in and help us out, and that's the second part of the same agenda item, is awarding a contract for Singing Wind to kind of help us keep up with that, that pavement. One of the other methods we're going to use to keep up with it is we're going to try some black base this year instead of the crushed limestone. You can put it down faster, get on it quicker without the water preparation and out the curing in it, and so we think we're going to get a little bit, maybe two or more, two or three more streets out by doing that this year. It is a little bit more expensive, but we think we're, we're, we're within our budget, and we think we're going to get some more done for it, so hopefully, keep your fingers crossed.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes, sir.
You were talking about the not enough crews, have we, have we, I assume we have, but have we looked at contracting out?
That's what he said, yeah.
So I'm sorry, I was, I went to sleep, my bad.
Yes, sir, we, yes, sir, we have a sub, and that's what Kyle talked about here, and it's awarding Singing Wind to, to do that. Upcoming, let me bring everybody forward here. Upcoming activities that we're, we're going to be hiring contractors for is the slurry seal and the crack seal. And you can see on there, slurry seal, we're in plan, plan year three, crack seal, we're in two or three, we've just, that's already, already been awarded, and we'll have a budget here in just a minute for you to look at. The full-depth reconstruction of Singing Wind, Kyle, we're awarding that tonight. So we'll be moving forward with that. Some of the other items that we'll be working on are engineer designs. We're interested in Earl Garrett and the traffic signal here, making it, helping it communicate with Highway 16 here, so that it's an even flow of traffic, you're not stopping at Earl Garrett and backing it up, or there's a lot of congestion in that area. The Shriners Roundabouts, the, that's on Shriners Street, and Shriners in Clay, where we're doing the actual land acquisition, and then the design of that roundabout too, not just, not just siding it. Additional traffic studies, Lehman and 16, considering a left turn lane there, would it work for, help the hospital be able to get out easier or not, is it warranted? And then also a possible traffic signal at Shriners University on Memorial Drive, so. Those are some, some things that y'all, you.
Sir, I got a question on the Shriners Roundabout, just, we were talking about that on Shriners Street, where it hits 16, we have turn lanes there now, but there's no turn signal on the lights, is that something we're looking into, or is that something we have to ask the state about?
We'd have to ask the state about that, but we could.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to see that, because that's, I mean, people are waiting there in the turn signal for a while. There's no actual arrow.
Also, I mentioned it to the city manager yesterday, but we were at that stop sign, at that stoplight, going east on Shriners, crossing Sidney Baker, and a bus was coming south down Sidney Baker and couldn't make the corner, because the lane, the turn lane was so wide on the west side of 16. We're at Shriners, right there by Jack in the Box.
Okay.
And so it may be because you're lining it up, I believe he said, with the cross the street, but the bus had a difficult time making the corner, ran over the curb.
On the inside lane, is that?
Yes.
So he was coming south down?
He was coming south and turned, and there was someone going, going to turn north in the turn lane, and he about took him out, but she was within her barriers, boundaries.
Okay, I'll make note of those two.
Also, you, you referenced on, in, in our summary statement, two potentials, but I don't know where North Lewis is, I drove down that today, just as it comes from, 27 is in bad, bad shape. I don't know if it's on the thing, but I won't get into the weeds on a lot of this this evening, but that's something that we might want to look at, instead of Guadalupe.
North Lewis? Instead of Guadalupe.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson?
I have a question, sir, are you looking at changing the, the time, the cycle time on the lights? That, we've had several citizens come and talk to us about the fact that if you go through, try to go through town late at night, for example, you just go one light and stop, and go one light and stop, where, where there's nobody else around, and I've experienced that a couple of times myself, but somewhere that ought to get on the list.
Okay, those are.
That's state, texted.
Yes, there, most of, the city only owns two lights, one at Water Street and Earl Garrett, and the other one at.
What do we need to, how do we get the message to texted?
Yeah, we've had some conversation with Mr. Coward with texted on that, and we're, we're working through that. We anticipate that with the new area engineer coming onboard, it's absolutely one of the topics of conversation we'll be having with him.
When does he or she get onboard?
Probably in the next four to six weeks.
In the next?
Four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks, okay.
Alright, any other questions by council, if not, we can, I'm sorry.
I got a few more slides.
I'm sorry.
Or we can, if y'all want to, we can be done. So let me bring you up to the budget to look at kind of where we're at with our numbers. So the previous year's fund balances, we had one hundred, or one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. I'll just summarize this, y'all can read all the numbers. But we, anyway, we have capital in 2018 of about $2.1 million. The expenditures that we're looking at is about $600,000 worth of materials for our street department. The crack seal program for, for this year is going to be $269,000, $269,060. And slurry seal, Singing Wind, the full-depth reconstruction, which we'll have here in a few minutes, and then the additional engineering and, and construction costs that we talked about there for those, those other points that y'all just pointed out there. So there's, now I'm ready for additional questions or.
Okay, since we have that 791 in the budget there, you're putting that, we have up to 1.2, how does that work on the bid?
So we go with the lowest responsible bid?
Yep, for Acme, it says alternate bid, what does that mean?
Okay, so the alternate bid was the black base that they were talking about, as opposed to the crushed limestone? And in this particular case, we didn't feel like the, the cost was worth it?
I see.
And so now on the Singing Wind aspect, this is actually the only thing that needs action from you on, on tonight's agenda. The rest was just an update, but yes, we wanted to see what the numbers came in for, for both flex base and, and black base. So we have a general idea to plan forward, you've mentioned Lewis. In, in the agenda bill, we also mentioned Francisco Lemos from Shriners at 27, Guadalupe from Plaza at 27. So that's, based on the numbers we received, we can do a full analysis to bring something back to you. As you see with Stuart's slide there, we actually don't have any funds allocated this year, but it's something that we'll go, look at for next fiscal year.
One last question, Kyle, what, what's the mileage, what's, what's the distance that it covers on Singing Wind?
You know, I was just looking at that, it's a three quarters of a mile, I think is what it.
Yeah, I was going to say, probably not even a mile.
I was just trying to equate that, but basically it goes from Sailing Way to Deer Trail. I can't remember the other name of that, that road offhand, but to the end, opposite of 534. So as, as far as that, we've received four bids, they were all pretty consistent, as you see in, in the agenda bill. This gives us roughly about fifty to fifty-five dollars a square yard for reconstruction pricing, based on, on the base bid. So that's something that we'll look at, these other street segments, and see how much we can allocate towards reconstruction of similar size. But as far as tonight's agenda, you know, Acme Bridge came in at.
Beep beep, zoom. That's the Road Runner, Wile E. Coyote. Acme.
Leave it to Brendan.
You're young, you don't remember it.
I thought you were cutting me off for a second.
I didn't see that coming at all. That was a dare this morning from Mr. Acme. We didn't see that coming, Kyle.
I, I didn't either. I need to get Cheryl going to. So, okay, we got a low bid with Acme of 791,000, $734.40. That's the only thing that needs action tonight, and we recommend approval.
Alright, do I, do I have a motion on this item?
Sure, I'll move approval.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Cast your votes, please. Motion carries five to zero.
I could say that was worth the price of admission, don't you think?
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item number 7A is a presentation from Impact Data Sources regarding the impact of the Cur economic development corporation and various recent economic development projects. I'll let Mr. Whitler, who's the chairman of KEDC, start us off.
Good evening, council members, again, my name's Mike Whitler, and I am employed by the Kerrville Public Utility Board, so I'm K-Pub's representative on, on the KEDC board. I've been with K-Pub since 2006 in various capacities, and in 2015, I was promoted to general manager, and at that time, I was appointed to the KEDC board. And then KEDC VPN October 16, and then president of the board October 17. One thing that we've been trying to work on this past year is, is work on improving the way we communicate the status of our activities, and, and also the value of, of KEDC or economic development in general for our community. So, so the presentation that we'll get to is, is, is the main reason for that. While, while I'm here, I just wanted to mention a, a few things. You're, you're probably well aware that our executive director, Brian O'Connor, left us in mid-February. I left with you an activity report that he had started preparing, and, and our idea here was to put this report together on a quarterly basis to present to the stake, to our stakeholders. The activities on that report are categorized, near-term, developing, and planning, so it's, it's more like those, the most timely activities first, and, and then, and then further and further down the line, and, and so there's a list of activities, a summary, action planned, and also responsible parties there for your information.
Can I ask a question on that? I mean, normally this type of stuff, is this a confidential thing, or is this something that?
This is, this was, this was given to the, the commissioner's court before Brian left, so Brian gave, gave an update to commissioner's court, and so, so I didn't see a re, a reason not to present it here. Or, or didn't see a reason not to give it here. There are, there are items on here where the, there isn't a specific name given, and, and there are other things going on that aren't on the report either as well, so. But it, it gives you an idea of, of the type of work that is, that has been going on. We're also working on a, a draft business plan, we've been doing some strategic planning, and, and also talked just a little bit with the chamber to see if there's a way to work together and improve, improve efficiencies. For, the main point of our presentation today is, is to present to you some information on the economic impact of KEDC, or I'd just say economic development in general for our community. We commissioned Jerry Walker of Impact Data Source, they're a consulting firm in Austin, to do a return on investment analysis from the economic development activities for the past several years, and I'll go ahead and turn things over to Jerry.
Thank you, as Mike said, I'm Jerry Walker, and let me tell you a little bit about Impact Data Source, we're a 24-year-old, nine-person Austin economic consulting, research and analysis firm, and we specialize in economic, we specialize in economic impact analysis. Our client focus is ED organizations, cities, counties, and states. We've done work in 39 states. But today, I'd like to discuss the KEDC Economic Impact Report that I did, tell you what, what I did, what we did, and then tell you about KEDC and its funding, and tell you how we did our analysis. And if I talk too fast, please slow me down if you want. And I'd discuss, I'd like to discuss the conclusions in the report. So what we did, we, we conducted an economic and fiscal impact analysis of KEDC's activities during four years, and it's 2014 to 2017, I'm sorry. And we prepared a 23-page full report and a seven-page executive summary. And KEDC's objectives, has three objectives, as most ED organizations do. They recruit and assist, assist firms, other projects in locating in Kerrville. They assist in retaining, they assist in retaining and expanding local firms, and they assist startups. All of this is, has a goal of creating jobs, salaries for residents, increasing taxable sales, and adding property to local tax rolls. An ED's organization should work to, should work to generate growth in a city or the area they serve, that's their objective, and, but generally, they have three objectives, they do three specific things, recruitment, retention, expansion, and also startups. And KEDC carried out its mission with the staff, and at a certain point, I think you only had one, perhaps, so. And staff that marketed and provided assistance to economic development prospects. To further assist KEDC in recruiting firms, the stakeholders offered incentives and tax payment. And so what were KEDC's major accomplishments during 2014 to 2017? It assisted the following firms, Mooney, Mooney International, Foxtank, James Avery, and Nature Blinds. And also, the KEDC, the impact report, my report calculated the economic impact of the four firms that KEDS, KEDC assisted during the four-year period, and we also calculated the resulting tax and other revenues that, for KEDC stakeholders. And largely, it was the revenues that were generated by these four firms. And we also calculated rate of return on investment for these stakeholders, for the stakeholders. And the return on investment, if you think about. And the return on investment, if you think about that as being the contributions that stakeholders made to KEDC, and these four firms were an investment that y'all made in, in KEDC and the firms. And the returns on that investment are the additional tax revenues that the stakeholders received during the four years or will receive during a comparable four-year period. Therefore, if we compare, we compare investments to returns, then we can calculate a rate of return on investment. So these are, this was the funding that y'all provided, or the stakeholders provided for KEDC's operations over four years. And as, as shown, the city of Kerrville provided seventy-nine thousand, and the largest contributor was EIC. And in total, y'all provided, or KEDC was provided about eight hundred thousand dollars for its operations over a four-year period. In addition to that funding, y'all provided, or the community provided, taxed some actual incentives as well as tax abatement. And, for example, EIC provided about two-point-three million dollars in, in cash incentives. The city and Kerr County provide six hundred thousand or so in tax abatement. And the city and the county contributed about a million dollars to the roof replacement at Mooney. And in total, the funding for KEDC and the incentives y'all provided over a four-year period for these four firms was about four-point-seven million dollars. And the data that I used in calculating these economic impacts, I used data provided and some assumptions to calculate economic impacts. And those economic impacts were jobs and salaries created and supported, commercial and residential property added to tax rolls, and taxable sales in Kerrville, utility uses, out-of-town visitor spending, and other economic impacts.
How do you determine out-of-town visitors to those four entities in that four-year period?
Let's see. Brian, we're working together, but Brian primarily, you know, estimated what potentially those were. And each firm, each firm was a little bit different.
Sure.
But largely, that sort of information Brian provided. Oh, I'm sorry. And KEDC provided tax rates and other community information. But also, we use certain assumptions, and I made certain assumptions such as the percent of taxable spending by a typical worker in Kerrville. And, and in general, about twenty-six percent of a worker's salary in Texas is spent on taxable goods and services. And we estimated about seventy percent of that spending was in Kerrville, that taxable spending. So most workers here, a lot of workers here live in Kerrville, and they spend money here. And we also estimated the percent of workers that would move to Kerrville, that would likely build or require the new residential property be built for them, and ultimately adding residential property to local tax rolls. And I also used some, also used some indirect multipliers, and they provided by US Department, I mean, US Bureau of Economic Analysis, to calculate indirect jobs and salaries. For example, for every job, for example, at James Avery, there's spin-off jobs created in the communities. And those jobs are HEB, convenience stores, and banks, and that sort of thing. But also, some companies in town that supply goods and services to James Avery and Mooney and, and these other companies. In calculating, in calculating the economic, I used the data that I've discussed and also assumptions to calculate jobs and salaries created and supported. Also, commercial and residential property added to local tax rolls, taxable sales in Kerrville, utility usage, out-of-town visitor spending, and other economic impacts. Well, some of the economic impacts over four years, kind of the big numbers, there's one-point-four, from these four firms over four years, the economic impact. It created about one-point-four million dollars in economic output and revenues for local businesses. And, and about four-hundred-and-seventy, um, six-hundred-and-seventy-two total local jobs were created. Eighty-nine million in taxable sal, eighty-nine million in salaries were paid. A hundred-and-thirty-five million in local taxable sales, and forty-one million in property added, added to or supported on local tax rolls.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about?
Oh, sure.
That, that last slide. What, what's the definite, I understand what a job created is, but what, what are we counting when we're saying jobs supported? It says six-hundred-and-seventy-two total local jobs created slash supported. What's supported?
Well, they're either, these firms, they were here before two thousand fourteen. But James Avery, for example, had an expansion during that period of time. So they're either, they were either created during that period, or they were jobs, some jobs perhaps were here that were supported.
Okay, so, so the economic impact over the four years is including, it's, it's not the change, it's the whole thing, right?
Right.
These four firms.
Right, that's right. And, and again, there were probably other firms that Brian, y'all recruited, perhaps, some other assistance that you may have provided. But these were things that Brian could identify specifically, so.
I got a question about that six-hundred-and-seventy-two number. Do we know how many of those actually live in Kerrville?
We've estimated, I believe, about sixty percent or seventy percent live in Kerrville. And again, those are assumptions that I made. And the, getting it down to the nats' eyebrow, we would have asked, I mean, Brian would have have asked James Avery, well, okay, do a survey of your, your employees and tell us where they live. So Brian tried to be not very intrusive. And in the report, I didn't identify specific things for these specific companies, because some of that, I felt, we felt would be proprietary.
So is that, is that sort of a, an industry standard assumption?
No, it's, it's more specific to a community since I don't, I did, I don't know Kerrville. So I had to depend on conversations with Brian, for example, well, what's reasonable? And, because most people, you know, Kerrville's a wonderful place. So most, most people who would work here would probably live here. I don't think they would drive in from San Antonio, so it's a little bit of a.
No, but an awful lot of people live in the county, not in the city limits.
Oh, right, that's right, sure.
And a lot of people do drive to San Point.
Right, that's right. So, but we estimated, I believe, seventy percent would live in Kerrville. And the tax and, the types of tax and other public revenues that we, that I, that I calculated, and again, these economic impact, jobs, taxable sales, property on tax rolls and so forth, translate into revenues for the city, K Pub, and, and the county, for example. So those taxes are new property and sales tax revenues, hotel occupancy taxes for the city, utility revenues for the city, utility revenues for K Pub, and miscellaneous other revenues. And the calculations of most of those revenues were straightforward. The taxable sales at the firm that Brian provided to me, I multiplied those for each, by each one of the local taxing districts' sales tax rate. And the values of the firm property for each one of those firms that were added to, that calculation is a simple calculation. It's the value of the firm's property divided by a hundred times the property tax rate. So most of my calculations were not black box at all. It wasn't, it was just straightforward calculations. And the economic, the tax and other public revenues over four years is, is shown. And it's about over five million dollars in, in tax revenues for, or revenues for each one, for all the local taxing districts. And the largest one was the city of Kerrville, because you have property tax and sales tax, and hotel occupancy tax and so forth, was two-point-three million dollars. And, and, and also, with that, I calculated rate of return on investment again. If you consider the incentives and your contribution to KEDC's activities, and the returns on those investments, on those, that investment is a, or the, and you consider the returns on that investment, additional, additional property and sales tax revenues, I can calculate a rate of return on investment. And the average annual rate of, the rate of, total rate of return for the city over four years is two-hundred-and-fifty-five percent. So that means that you invested nine-hundred thousand, in return, you got two-point-three million dollars.
Is that just sales tax?
It does include sales tax.
And hot, did you say?
It, it does, right, it does. Right, and again, those are, the hot taxes are based on the number of visitors estimated, about how long they would stay, and on sales taxes, how much they would spend locally during their visit. But it does include hot taxes, right. So, but overall, for all of the stakeholders in KEDC and these firms, the rate of return over four years is a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-twenty-six percent. And, you know, if you evaluate, is that good or bad? And, you know, a way of doing, comparing it would be to, comparing it to the Dow Jones, for example, or Standard and Poor's. And Standard and Poor's, for example, over the past several, several, many, many years, has had like a six or eight percent rate of return on investment. So a, average annual rate of return on, and again, this is a return of four years, so you divide it by four, and that's your average annual rate of return on investment.
It's, it actually ends up coming up to a little less than six percent annual rate of return, right? If we calculate it on a, a regular way, that, that one-twenty-six turns into about six percent.
No, the one-twenty-six percent is over four years. You divide that by four, and it's thirty-something, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Carl?
Yeah, it doesn't match with what I, it's okay.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, it's all right.
Now, there are other ways of doing it if you're a finance person, for example, internal rate of return, and there's some other thing. But this is a straightforward, over, over four years, y'all put this amount of money in it, and your rate of return on investment for that money is a hundred-and-twenty-six percent. And let me talk about, if I may, some, some conclusions and observations. The creation of new taxes generated by KED-assisted projects are examples, I believe, of a focused economic development effort, what a focused economic development effort can accomplish for the benefit of the community. And such new taxes and public revenues can be significant. The job growth and increased, the job growth and increased tax revenues can be accomplished with a relatively inexpensive investment in an economic development organization and activities. And I'm not suggesting that KEDC caused all of this investment growth presented in this report. Had KED not been here, some of this may have happened. James Avery probably would still be around, and they'd be creating jobs. But what I've observed in doing this for about twenty-four years, working with a lot of economic development organization, is that there has to be, some things like this just don't happen by their own. You have to have someone selling your community and really, really marketing to these people, and really providing some economic development services. That's key, I believe. And while, while I looked at rate of return over a four-year period, some of these firms, hopefully like James Avery, for example, they'll be around for twenty years. So you would continue to get returns. You've invested some money upfront with incentives and also tax abatement. But the payoff from these firms will be over, you know, twenty or thirty or forty years. James Avery, I'm not sure how long they've been here, but hopefully they'll stay around. But, you know, if they've been here for fifty years, hopefully they'll be around for fifty more. So your investment will have returns forever, maybe. And I'm not trying to imply anything with that. But, but these firms will, and, and if you, if you continue, continue to provide, cultivate them and provide services, and you say, we really want you in this community, what can we do for you? What can we do to retain and expand your company? They'll stay. And that, that's me without knowing these companies specifically. But KEDs provided support to these businesses, some more than others, and in some cases, may be facilitated only incentives. But Impact Data Source, I, I believe that a one-stop center for economic development services is critical to communities' economic growth. And some of these investments may not have occurred without the efforts of an economic development organization and contacts and assistance provided by that economic development organization. Have any questions?
Yeah, I got a few. So the first one is more of a general thing. So the, the title of this report is "The Impact of KEDC", but then in the introduction, it gets a little more specific, and it's truly an impact of those four companies, correct?
Right.
So we, is, is there a, is, are there studies out there in the world that actually give us a quantifiable study of the impact of that organization?
Well, the impact of the organization is based on its results, and that's what all of them, because there's, they have no purpose other than to create jobs and add property, assist companies and create jobs and add property to tax rolls. So that's their, so if, if economists like us do an economic impact of an economic development organization, it's based on their performance. And the performance is, they assisted these four firms. And, and you, we do an economic impact analysis of those four firms, or the firms assisted.
Okay. So back to the, the rate of return. Truly, when it's a hundred-and-twenty-six percent, we invested four-point-seven million into the system. We got five-point-nine out. So we're not actually profiting a hundred-and-twenty-six, we're profiting twenty-six, right?
Well, you look at rate of return, so you look at your investment, and then you look at the returns, and you compare the.
The difference.
Right, you compare those two. It's a hundred and twenty-six percent.
Right, so the difference is actually the twenty-six percent.
So the net benefits, we could, you could look at it that way, would be twenty-six.
Yeah, so.
You could, sure.
So, so our profitability, if you will, of these, understanding it goes on forever, I get that. But the annual rate of return is that six percent I was talking about. But, and, and part of the calculation was the, the public invested into the economic development system, correct?
Right.
And so you didn't produce these numbers, you, you said Brian gave them these numbers. But we're actually missing a few dollars in that investment. One is that KEDC, you write in your report as having a budget over the four years of seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. That's actually the amount of money that was funded to them during those four years. But their expense budget was actually eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So.
Okay.
It's because there was carryover from that first year. So that would change that number, that one-twenty-six would end up going down a little bit.
It may, sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's small. But then, then there was also, there's also more that we invest in our economic system. EIC currently pays the city a hundred thousand a year for project-related admin services. So that's actually more going into the denominator of this equation. After you do all that, that one-twenty-six gets down to about one-fourteen. Again, that's no fault that you didn't get, those numbers weren't provided to you. But, but that would be the way that would work, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If you want the universe of all the investments and that sort of thing. And kind of one point, though, on tax abatement, for example. And kind of one point, though, on tax abatement, for example, one way to look at that is that may not be an investment, because y'all weren't receiving any property tax revenues from that, and when you, you receive all of it, you give a little bit back, so.
Right.
But that's just one.
Right, yeah. And so, and like I say, again, whatever the rate is, if it's better than one, better than zero, I understand that it's going on forever, and so it's something. But getting to the, kind of the question of, because, because we as a community are trying to evaluate our whole system.
Sure.
And it would be nice if there was a way, and this is why I was asking you as the guy that does these studies, if there was a way to find a little more specific to KEDC's function, in sort of, I was thinking two sort of metrics. One is comparatively to other cities, that rate of return, that after you make the adjustments I talked about, it gets down to about four percent annual rate of return. If there's a way to compare that to other cities, do, do studies like that get done?
They do, but consultants, you know, we do a consult for a specific city, we don't give it to our buddies, you know, in Dallas, say, Fred, why don't you go ahead and use this, and so forth, so, but it, but it actually is a hundred and twenty-six percent.
I understand that. And then, so, a second possible study that, do people do something like this? In the, in the case of our economic development, specifically the EIC, a way to look at how efficient we are with utilizing the potential funds that are available. So, in that four-year period, EIC had at its disposal, EIC has disposal, about twelve and a half million of collected sales tax. And in that four-year period, I guess we utilized about two point three million. So, is there any studies that produce comparisons of utilization of available funds? You know, because we've, we've got this twelve point five million dollar potential investment that we're underutilizing. Do they do studies like that?
Well, there are studies, or economic, I mean, there are consultants that do that sort of thing. There are consultants that will come in and assist communities in goal-setting, for example, a strategic plan, and based on what Mike has said, y'all are doing a business plan. So, at the beginning of the year, then you set certain benchmarks, you said, okay, during this year, we want to create a hundred jobs, for example. But you have to, you have to associate a budget with that, you have to market it, and you depend on your economic development person to say, yeah, I can do that, but I have to go to a convention in Chicago, have to go up to the state, talk to the governor's office, and so forth, and say, governor's office, you know, give me some referrals, and that sort of thing, so, but that's, you can do that, you can absolutely do that, to say that, set benchmarks, and here's X number of dollars that we have, and this is what we expect from you, and expect, and have performance measures. And that's what I typically see in cities, you, you don't necessarily have to have a big budget and say, okay, Fred, do your thing, and so forth, and, you know, smart people like the city council and the board, that's what you can do, and that's what I believe Mike is doing. So, if you just, you know, you set, here's what I'm going to do, and if we do this, we're going to be efficient, and, and you can, there are, and we've done these, actually, but you can say, you know, for every dollar spent, I mean, for every job you create, it costs you three hundred and twenty-five dollars, for example, to secure that job. So, you want to be efficient and have a good investment, so, it, it's more of a local community, but there are economic developers that, that know that and do that, and, and there are consultants that can assist you. What I've found from consultants, I love them, because that's what I do, you know, you tell them what you want, and they regurgitate it to you in a report, so you don't necessarily want to have to do that. So, that's why your board, city council, you know, y'all are sharp on all of this, you know what you want to do, and you just have a direction and a focus and a business plan, a strategic plan for what you want your economic development organization to do. And at the end of the year, if you didn't create a hundred jobs, you created fifty, then you say, well, okay, what else do we need to do to create a hundred jobs? Do we need more marketing budget? Do we need more, we need to offer more incentives? Do we need to go down to San Antonio and market to some of those firms, and tell them that Kerrville's a wonderful place, wonderful place to come, and, you know, we'll provide free land and that sort of thing to you.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's what I have.
Any other questions?
I got one more question. Do we know where we compared, like Fredericksburg, Bernie, or other cities that are close to our size?
Uh, no.
Not in this?
No.
Does KEDC have that? No.
I, you know, through the years, I might have done an economic impact analysis for Bernie, and we do a lot of those, so, our, our contacts with economic development organization is evaluating incentive packages for them. So, they, they have firm, ABC Corporation coming to town, and they want to know, you know, a good level of incentives to offer. And sometimes firms, as you know, are very aggressive, they say, give me this amount of money, and that's what they want. But, so that's what we do, we give, we try to do reports that are specific to a firm, and say, okay, if you recruit this firm, here are the additional tax revenue, so if you offer them a hundred thousand dollars, city, then this is your rate of return on investment payback period. So, it boils it down to a number that you feel comfortable with. If you feel comfortable with an average annual rate of return over ten years, for example, of ten percent, then that's what you, you know, that would be your maximum. But generally, economic developers look for, and each city is a little bit different, but generally, you, rate of return or payback period of incentives for a specific firm, not this, is about ten years or less, but that's your call. I want to get my money back from this firm in ten years or less. If there are firms that comes in and rents a facility, and that's their commitment to the city for seven years, then whatever incentives you give them, you want to pay, for that to be paid back within ten years. Now, average annual rate of return on investment, it can be any number that you feel comfortable with. It should be greater than the city's cost of capital. If you borrow money, for example, at five percent, there's some risk involved in giving this firm some of that money, so you want a couple of points, two or three points. So, the average annual rate of return is, is something that you would feel comfortable with. I mean, just your gut, because y'all are, y'all, y'all know this, but it's whatever rate of return on investment that you want.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, to answer Vince, to answer your question, I would be willing to bet you that there's somebody from other cities that are coming to Kerrville trying to get some of our businesses to move to their city. I'll bet you lunch on that.
They do it all the time, we do.
Yeah, and, and, and we need somebody out there on the road, I say on the road, because we can take, we should be taking good care of our customers, i.e. those businesses in town now, but we ought to be out there looking for some others to help us grow.
Sure. And business retention and expansion, large economic development organizations have a person devoted to that.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's just going around town and talking to Joe at the machine shop.
And we haven't had anybody since the first of the year. So, that's, that's something I worry about when I think about it.
Commissioner Reeves, I know you came to probably part of this, did you have any questions for Mr. Walker?
Mayor, I just wanted to hear what was presented in the House. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming. Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Item number eight is the city manager's report. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, so, just a quick overview of the monthly capital improvement program report coming around, EIC is passing that around now. Number five is...
Well, I can't get it to come apart. Wait a minute, I can get it sticking together. Just a sec.
So, while we're doing this, Brenda, if, if we were to recruit Acme Building Company to come here, what would we get?
Acme.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, number five is the parking garage maintenance and repairs. We anticipate that being out for bid award, or on your agenda for bid award in late May, so that, we are moving on that one. And then eight and nine together, the reuse projects, we're still on schedule there, May for the mains, and then we were looking at pictures today where the bottom of the pond has all been lined now, including with the, the cement, and now they're working on the side, so, we hope to have that operational within the next, what, sixty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, on number eleven, the sports complex reuse pond, we, just a side note there, that we are bringing the whole sports complex forward for replating, and that, we anticipate that going to P and Z in April or May. Tennis Center improvements, just a reminder that you all have a workshop in April, that's going to be onsite at the tennis center with a consultant to review their ideas and their plans, that's that ten a.m. workshop, but then there's also a meeting that evening, an open house with the consultant, or that afternoon.
One thirty.
One thirty. And so Brenda's getting notices out about all that. And then nineteen, the taxi committee reinvestment zone, I talked to the consultant this afternoon, and they're looking at three or four options on boundaries, and what that might look like, and running some numbers, and so we hope to have some information there. That project, as well as the hotel conference study, as well as the retail study, all should be wrapped up in May. I sent a note to you this afternoon about the hotel and conference center study, a couple of them about the survey that went out from the chamber, they already had seventy-one responses the first day, so, they hope to be wrapping that up soon as well, so, everything's on track with regard to the studies. With that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer your questions now or later.
Questions by council, study this. Seeing done, we'll move to number nine, items for future agendas, anyone? Other than what we've already had, then item number ten A is deliberate and consider the purchase of exchange lease or value of real property in accordance with section five five one oh seven two, for property consisting of thirty-four acres. Mr. McDaniel's asked to discuss it in executive session, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, under section five five one oh seven two, we go into executive session to discuss ten A.
Okay, second, motion is second. Motion carries five zero, so at seven twenty-three, we will adjourn to executive session. Okay, let the record show that we are out of executive session, back into regular session at seven thirty-five PM. Let the record also show there was no action taken in executive session, so with that, there is nothing left on the agenda, and we will adjourn at seven thirty-five point forty-nine. Okay.